We have no special orders or public hearings this evening. We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment has guidelines. Each individual will state their name. They will have five minutes. And then that is their time. When an individual addresses the board under public comment at the opening of the meeting, an individual may only address the board once under this section. The Board of Commissioners will not answer questions, nor will they respond to any public comment at this time. At this time, you please step forward and identify yourself. First round of public comment.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Overton. My name is Peggy Clevenger from Spring Arbor Township, and I'm here as a possible nominee for the Solid Waste Planning Committee update. My background is that I was born and raised in Jackson County. Raised two children here. Luckily, one of them has chosen as an adult to stay in Jackson County and earn a living here. We've, my husband and I have had three separate businesses that we run in, or have run in Jackson County. Together, we were also responsible in financially assisting with the development of the Falling Waters Trail and seeing that through to realization. I've also worked in a nonprofit. I understand budgeting. I've done grant writing. And I know I have a strange hobby in solid waste management, but it's something I've been interested in for a long time. I've done a lot of research, served on a committee in Spring Arbor Township for a while. We did some investigation there and served with Commissioner Duckham on a recycling committee a while ago. What I would like to bring to this committee would be just a representative of average household in Jackson County with maybe a little bit of understanding of how this would go together and how it could bring about perhaps some financial easing for ratepayers and bring something together that we could be proud of in Jackson County in our plan. I think that Jackson County really is off to a very good start. We have, we have some waste management businesses in town that have really gone a long way in bringing recycling to the public. I think our issue is just that we need to provide perhaps some rate relief, and I would hope that we would be able to do that in the plans that we would make through this plan update. So that's why I'm here, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I too would like to thank you for your consideration as an appointee to the Solid Waste Planning Committee. My name is Tanya Olson. I am with Granger. We're a company based in Lansing, Michigan. I am actually a born and raised, formerly from the Irish Hills, so happy to be back in this neck of the woods. And I have, as you'll see from the application, been working at Granger for 15 years. It's a family-owned and operated company. We've been in the trash business for going on 50 years. I've been able to, over my career, be involved with quite a bit with solid waste county planning. Also do have some interactions with the Department of Environmental Quality, and I appreciate your consideration for appointment to the committee. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mr. Overton. My name is Steve Sharp. I am here to introduce a hemp resolution for the county commissioners to adopt. And what it says here is, "Whereas industrial hemp refers to the non-drug oil seed and fibrous varieties of cannabis which is cultivated exclusively for the fiber, stalk, and seed. Industrial hemp is genetically distinct from the drug variety of cannabis, also known as marijuana. Industrial hemp has less than three tenths of one percent of the psychoactive ingredient THC, tetrahydrocannabinol. The flower tops of the industrial hemp cannot produce any drug effect when smoking or ingesting. And whereas the reluctance of the United States Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA, to permit industrial hemp farming is denied agricultural producers in this country the ability to benefit from the high-value, low-input crop, which can provide significant economic benefits to the producers and manufacturers here in Jackson County." The DEA has the authority under the Controlled Substances Act to allow Michigan to regulate industrial hemp farming under state law and without requiring individuals, federal applications, and licensing. Now therefore, be it resolved from the Jackson County Board of Commissioners that we, yeah, memorize the Congress and the administration to recognize the industrial hemp as a valuable agricultural commodity and take steps to remove barriers in order to encourage the commercial production of this crop. And be it further resolved that we urge the Michigan Legislature to pass legislation to regulate industrial hemp farming under state law and regulations without requiring federal application, licensing, and fees. Why I want to do this is because Jackson used to be a high-performing town with a lot of industry. What would happen with this industrial hemp production is Jackson could become a processing center. We have the railroad system here to truck this stuff out and put it out into the country after we process it right here. We have all the farmland around Jackson, including Hillsdale and Laneway. All the other counties don't have the access that we have with the highway system, with the railroad system that we have here. This could really start putting jobs back in Jackson, and this is what we really need. So how I have to do this, I guess I need to ask Administrator Overton and the Commissioners if they would review this resolution and consider adopting it. Thank you.
My name is Jim Swickert, and I'm also interested in the Solid Waste Planning Commission. Born and raised in Jackson County, I've operated Northwest Refuge for 30 years. I was a pioneer in instigating the recycling that is evident in Jackson County, not only in the implementation, but I operated over 13 recycling centers. I currently have the only processing recycling plant in Jackson, and I would like to offer my services on the planning commission. Solid waste certainly has been in my, the last 30 years. Thank you very much for your support.
Good evening. I'm Glenn Remington. You have an application from me for the Solid Waste Plan Update. My resume is attached to it, so I won't elaborate. I would just like to share that I, from the age of seven, lived in this area with some minor exceptions in between till now, and I have, depending on how you define it, close to 30 years straight through earning a living in environmental management, environmental science, engineering, one form or another. Growing up in the heart of Waterloo, the habitats, the wetlands, the rivers, the streams of this area are near and dear to my heart, and I think we have before us a very serious piece of business, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Chairman, fellow Commissioners, my name is David Emmons, President of Emmons Service. We've been in business since 1918. I am the third generation. I served on the first planning commission board, and I'd like to just come to this commission of this chairman to offer what knowledge that I can afford and certainly afford. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name's Mark Mewich. I reside in Summit Township. I also am privileged to be considered for the position of the Solid Waste Planning Committee. I'm the chairman of the Conservation Committee of the Central Michigan Group of the Sierra Club. I've been active in the Sierra Club for 30 years. I've also been active down in Texas as an advisory panel member of the Houston-Galveston Area Council, which is an intergovernmental group of 13 counties down there, and we consider the very same issues that our Solid Waste Planning Committee is going to be considering in the future here for Jackson County. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
My name is Peter Barmouth, and I live in the city of Jackson, and I am not on the Solid Waste Planning Committee. I would like all the Commissioners to take a peek at the statement of qualifications that I provided them with. This is Sloan Vasquez, one of the top municipal solid waste and recycling advisors in the country. I have contacted six different individuals who have worked with this company unbeknownst to Mr. Sloan, and all of them have exceptionally high regard for his services. They claim he is one of the best impartial third parties in the country, that his rates are reasonable, that he's got established upfront pricing, that his quality of work is exceptional in the industry, and that he shows great flexibility in working with people and their timeframes and adjusting to schedule shifts. As you notice, the people who have come forward here to speak on this issue comprise a variety of local interests, particularly those of the waste haulers. I would like the Commissioners to consider the idea that the interests of Jackson County and the interests of the waste haulers may not be identical, and that you are here on this board to serve the citizens and the community of Jackson County. I would like you to consider hiring a third-party consultant to help advise the board. That way, we will minimize local politics and agendas and perhaps come up with a waste plan that will be good for the citizens of this county for the next 30 years. Thank you very much.
Good evening. John Wilson, City of Jackson. A couple of years ago, the county commission spent $50,000 for a consultant's study on the waterfalls, and finally tonight, the commission is making its first vote on how to proceed with the consultant's recommendation by forming an ad hoc committee. There already is in place a county commission committee system and a parks board made up of commissioner appointees. Rather than spend any more time by forming an ad hoc committee that won't even involve a member of the general public, this commission should instead performance due diligence by discussing, debating, and then voting on how to proceed with fixing the infrastructure of the waterfalls, taking down the wall, and dredging the lagoons. Even though it's long overdue that the board has decided to recognize the Spicer Group's study, at least the board has finally started moving the ball down the field. Let's just make sure we put the ball in the end zone rather than having to end up punting the ball. Rather than forming a politically-appointed ad hoc committee, this county commission board with input from the Parks Board should be the ones making the decisions on the cascades. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Special meeting of the standing committees. There is none. Arrived at the minutes for the August 20th, 2013 meeting. We have a motion and support. Any comments, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Arrived at the consent agenda. I have a motion and support. Any items to be removed? Mr. Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 11D.
David. That will move to item 15A. Standing Committee, Report Personnel and Finance. chaired by Commissioner Duckham. Any other items for removal? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you post the vote? Should be on your computer monitor in front of you. Vote is passed unanimously. We've now arrived at the standing committee reports. Standing Committee for Agency and Affairs chaired by Commissioner Elwell. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got a number of appointments tonight. First of all, we still have open seats on the Emergency Management Advisory Council that have gone unfilled. I'll have to carry over on the Ag Preservation Board. We have two open seats, and we have a committee recommended nominee for one of them being Kenny Price.
We have a support. Any nominations from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Next, we have a number of appointments for the Solid Waste Planning Committee. There's a total of 14 members. In the first group, we have four representatives from the waste management industry, and the committee has recommended Tanya Olson, Jason Kropinski, Charles Donegan, and David Emmons.
Any nominations from the floor? Mr. Duckham.
I'd like to nominate Jim Swickert, please.
I have motion and support. Commissioner Elwell, how would you like to handle this? You want to separate them all?
At the pleasure of the Chair. I think we handled them all together, really, in committee, and it worked pretty well, in all honesty, I think.
We have an additional nominee under solid waste here.
Right. I understand. We could simply vote until we get a majority for each one, correct? Mr. Chair, you were talking about just as one group, I assume, correct, on how to vote for those, right?
I'm working with the clerk right now on how we're going to handle this.
Yeah, whatever way is easier for her, too.
I guess what we'll start with is we'll call the roll and just go through them all until we get the majority.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we voting for, are we going to name four right now as part of our vote, or one at a time?
No, you have, you have five nominated.
Right, but we can only vote for four.
No, you only can vote for one.
Well, at a time. Well, that's what I'm wondering. I'm like, are we doing this one at a time?
That's correct, yep. Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yes, we are. And then, so what we'll do is we'll just renominate each time. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lightner? Mr. Leczka? Commissioner Rice?
Olson.
Mr. Duckham? Commissioner Alexander?
Olson.
Mr. Mahoney?
Olson.
Commissioner Plachek?
Olson.
Commissioner Elwell?
Olson.
Chairman Shatwell?
Olson.
Olson, ready to go to the first round.
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell.
Well, I've nominated all these ones through committee. I can nominate the same ones again if you want, or we can just begin filling the second slot from the nominees we have left, I think would be the appropriate way to do it.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Is the board comfortable with that?
We have three spots to fill and four names to choose from now.
Correct.
And just to remind, the nominees are Kropinski, Swickert, Donegan, and Emmons, correct?
Yes. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leczka? Commissioner Rice?
Emmons.
Commissioner Duckham?
Emmons.
Mr. Alexander?
Emmons.
Mr. Mahoney?
Emmons.
Mr. Plachek?
Emmons.
Mr. Elwell?
Emmons.
Commissioner Lightner?
Emmons.
Chairman Shatwell?
Emmons.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Rice?
Donegan.
Commissioner Duckham?
Donegan.
Commissioner Alexander?
Donegan.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Donegan.
Commissioner Plachek?
Donegan.
Commissioner Elwell?
Donegan.
Commissioner Lightner?
Donegan.
Mr. Leczka?
Donegan.
Chairman Shatwell?
Donegan.
Are you ready to call the roll?
All right. Commissioner Duckham?
Swickert.
Commissioner Alexander?
Kropinski.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Swickert.
Mr. Plachek?
Swickert.
Mr. Elwell?
Swickert.
Mr. Lightner?
Kropinski.
Mr. Leczka?
Swickert.
Commissioner Rice?
Swickert.
Chairman Shatwell?
Swickert.
Seven-two?
Seven, that's correct.
Swickert, seven-two. Madam Clerk, when you're ready. Appointed to the committee at this time are Olson, Swickert, Donegan, and Emmons. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The one representative from the industrial waste generator is vacant, will be filled at a later time. Moving on to number three would be two representatives from the environmental interest groups, and the committee has recommended Peggy Clevenger and Mark Mewich. Hopefully, I pronounced your name right, Mark.
Motion and support. Any nominations from the floor? Yes, sir?
I'd like to nominate Travis Fatasek.
Any other nominations from the floor? You do not have the right to nominate. This is a... Any other nominations from the Commissioners? Seeing none. We'll proceed with the same ballot procedure as last time? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Alexander?
Clevenger.
Sorry. Commissioner Mahoney?
Fatasek.
Commissioner Plachek?
Fatasek.
Mr. Elwell?
Clevenger.
Mr. Lightner?
Clevenger.
Commissioner Leczka?
Clevenger.
Commissioner Rice?
Clevenger.
Commissioner Duckham?
Clevenger.
Chairman Shatwell?
Clevenger.
Seven, seven-two?
Seven-two. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Mahoney? Commissioner Plachek?
Fatasek.
Commissioner Elwell?
Mewich.
Commissioner Lightner?
Mewich.
Commissioner Leczka? Commissioner Rice?
Mewich.
Mr. Duckham?
Mewich.
Mr. Alexander?
Mewich.
Chairman Shatwell?
Mark Mewich, one, seven-two. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One rep from county government, the committee recommends Chair Steve Shatwell.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
Next, the number five, one representative from township government, and the committee recommends Dan Wymer.
Any nominations from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
One representative from city government, committee recommends Derek Dobies.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Seventh, one rep from the Regional Solid Waste Planning Agency, and the committee recommends Phil Duckham.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lastly, three representatives from the general public, the committee recommends Glenn Remington, Jeff Snyder, and Jack Ripstra.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's all I have to report.
Thank you, David. We will repost and list those vacancies again. Standing Committee, Report Human Services chaired by Commissioner Alexander. Julie?
Commissioner Shatwell, we have no business to bring in front of the board.
Thank you. Standing Committee, Personnel and Finance chaired by Commissioner Duckham. Phil?
One item tonight, Mr. Chair, would be item 15A. It'd be the equalization contract with Norville Township.
Any support?
Support.
Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I ask it be polled from the consent agenda to make a small adjustment to the budget adjustments that are part of the motion, which would be on page four of the document. Just simply on the decrease to the contingency, it needs to reflect the amount as being $1,219.53. Thank you.
Does the maker of the motion all right with that correction?
Yes.
The supporter all right with it? Commission, shall we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Duckham.
That will be all tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We've arrived at unfinished business. At this time, item 16C. The Board of Commissioners asked me at the end of last meeting to have a meeting with Administrator Controller, and since Administrator Controller Overton was found to meet or exceed in many categories of his performance review by the Board of Commissioners, I would so move to grant a 3% pay increase as all union employees effective with his anniversary date. Support? I have a motion and support. Any Commissioner comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion passed. Ten-one? Eight-one, excuse me. I keep trying to get us to 11, everybody. Keep trying to get us to 11. The second part of, the second motion is that up to 80 hours of reimbursement for unused paid paid time off at the conclusion of his 2014 annual hire anniversary date. I have a motion and support. Commissioner Elwell.
Just a brief comment, Mr. Chair. I appreciate these two issues being separated. I'll be voting no on this one, not because I don't think the Administrator deserves vacation time, because I think he does, but we need to remember that we have a very capable deputy administrator that works very well with our administrator and I just know the importance of taking vacation time. If we do allow this, it's increasing the cost to the county and I certainly think with the deputy administrator here, it should be possible for the Administrator to take his vacation time off and not be compensated for it and that's what I'd prefer to see. So, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To add to what Commissioner Elwell just said, as everyone just heard, I voted nay last time for the raise, I will also be voting no on these PTO hours and it's certainly not a reflection on Administrator Overton. From my perspective, though, we have a lot of issues. Tonight, we've been discussing the solid waste issues. We have the Cascades Fall challenges. We have the county's 2015 financial shortfalls. We have other matters with other agencies where we don't know where the money's going to go or what's going to happen. We have continuous increased healthcare costs and other unknowns there as well. So, for me, this is a matter of timing and for me, this is just not the time for our Administrator Controller to be a reflection of giving a 3% raise or these hours. Thank you.
Mr. Duckham?
Yes, I'll be supporting this. I appreciate Administrator Overton's devotion to Jackson County and the people that he looks over here. We've had some tough issues this year. It's been a very tough year. We've had the incinerator closure issue, an issue that is 25 years ago, thought probably would be very unlikely. We wrestled with that. We have moved forward with JDOT, assuming Jackson Department of Transportation from the former road commission. We worked on a very tough budget year. We've completed a very long-wanted project that was bringing down the Riverwalk. I think it's through Administrator Overton's devotion that we got this done and I appreciate him sticking by getting his job done even though he had vacation due and I don't really think it should cost him vacation time. However, I'll preface that, that I expect him to take vacations next year. Thank you.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Vice Chair and just would like to say that I've appreciated the work that Mike has done and also remember comments that were made to him at the six-month period when he first got here and I just think that we need to keep pace with what we say. I think Mike has done an excellent job. I think that while he has a very capable assistant, he has held the course as the Board has desired him to versus push things off to his deputies. So, I think that, yes, we do need to take time off, but I think that his decision not to do so this year was warranted by all the things that were mentioned by our Vice Chair and I support that Mike be able to receive these 80 hours. If we just add him to the books, that's what would cost more money to simply pay it out as we would have had to anyway if he had taken the time off, isn't costing the county anything any different? So, thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Elwell?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think to be clear, if we, and again, I support Mike and appreciate how hard he works in this. My position on this is not meant to be a reflection and I don't appreciate that, but it does increase the cost to us. Mike has paid a salary that will change with the raise, but other than that, it doesn't change and if we pay him the salary on top of compensating him for PTO time not taken, it does increase the cost to the county, just to be clear on that.
Would he have not received a check? Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you. Don't our employees receive compensation when they take vacation time? I mean, is that, I mean, I...
Yes, they receive compensation, but they don't receive additional compensation beyond what their salary is already warranted. So, Commissioner Elwell is correct. If you were to grant me vacation time that I did not take, it would be on top, it would be additional dollars from the budget.
Well, I think you deserve it because you did what this Board had asked you to do.
We ready to vote? Commissioner Lightner?
I just want to say one thing. I appreciate Mike's work and I am new to this Board and I understand that he's had to do extra work because of the choices that we have made for the county. I just really think that the timing is really bad. I'm going to reluctantly support this, but, I mean, I just, I just want to echo what Carl said. It is, the timing is terrible for this, but I just think in the future that Mike will go ahead and take those days as, as needed in the coming years. So, thanks.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Chair? Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Plachek?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
No.
Commissioner Lightner?
Yes.
Commissioner Leczka?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
No.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Chairman Shatwell?
Yes.
Seven, two?
Let the vote reflected pass, seven, two. It was new business. Nothing. You scared me at first. We have no new business. At this time, we've arrived at the second round of public comment. This is for three minutes. Please step forward and identify yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Overton, my name is Rick Seegers. I'm the president of the Jackson County Parks Association and we are going to have an open house for Brandon Ransom Tuesday, the 24th, next Tuesday, at the Cascades Manor House from 2:00 in the afternoon till 5:30. It's an open house and we'd love to have you all attend so we can say goodbye to Brandon.
Hi, Steve Sharp again. The Freedom Read Freedom Film Festival is through the library and on October 6th, which is a Sunday at 2:00 PM, they're having a film, The House I Live In, and this has a lot to do with the War on Drugs and how this affects our community and the country as a whole. It has a lot to do with what I've done earlier also with industrial hemp production, just because of the way that everything came down to make hemp illegal, they had to make marijuana illegal. So, that started the whole war on drugs and it started way back in the 30s and this is a very special film to be watching before the elections just so that you understand and the community understands how this is affecting all households, not just the people that are doing drugs. This affects all of society, so I hope that the Commission will take the advantage of taking a Sunday and going down to the library here in Jackson and entertain yourself with this for a two-hour period. Thank you very much.
My name is Barry Sparks. I am Captain William Sparks's grandson. From all the news that I've heard, I'd like to comment and commend all of you for the forward thoughts that you're thinking of helping this Cascades stay alive. On May 9th, 1932, Cap Sparks opened the Cascades to the public. Our friend Brandon has been band-aiding the Cascades in and out and it's in dire straits, folks. I commend you, each and every one of you, ladies and gentlemen, to do your very best to keep this thing going. The gem needs polishing. It's a great asset to the city of Jackson. I've lived here for 84 years. My dad, Harry, my uncle Cliff, and my granddad were all instrumental at Sparks Willington and in Jackson to help this Cascades progress. I commend all of you. To the fact that last January, through the law offices downtown, I thought that it would be very necessary after I'm dead and gone, that something keeps, the Cap Sparks Hill, the Cascades, lights illuminated, the plumbing working, so we've done a Captain William Sparks Cascades Falls Fund. It's an endowment fund. We've been blessed from the IRS with a 503(c) and I'm just at the point now of starting to go out to foundations and I'm going to be working with Brandon's replacement as we are able to have monies going into Comerica Bank, then I can take it to Jim Grace to actually have funds that we can say each year we'll have 5% of those funds going into the parks. It's only for the Cascades Hill. It's not for the dredging. It's not for the Manor House or the golf course. It's only for keeping Cap Sparks illumination going.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we're at Commissioner comments. Commissioner Plachek?
I just wanted to note the quality of the people that applied for the Solid Waste Committee. I think that we had some very, very good applicants. I think we have a good team and you've got a lot of hard work ahead of you, but I think we put together a very good team, a good committee for this.
Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you. One comment. I unfortunately had the privilege, if you can say that, of meeting a family this past Saturday that lost their 19-year-old son to a heroin overdose and when the gentleman talked about the war on drugs, I mean, it just reminded me of that family and how much I've been praying for them and praying for all of the people who suffer from substance abuse use, but certainly our young people and to know that heroin is on the rise that much, that 19-year-old kids are trying that drug. So, I just ask that you pray for that family and for all families that have loved ones that suffer from that illness. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned.